This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular session meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. We are going to roll call in. All right, Tim St. John.
Present.
Eric Geyet.
Here.
Megan Harvey.
Here.
Laura Scott present, Sam Hunter.
Here.
Linda Markey.
Here.
Mayor Derby.
Here.
Henry Logana.
Here.
Walter Baker.
Here.
Nice. Hello, everyone, we're going to begin with announcements this evening. Megan, do we have any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence, I don't think, let me just confirm that. No, I don't have any correspondence.
Gifts?
I don't have any gifts?
No gifts.
A little whole turn?
We are gonna then transition. I'm glad we have a big crowd tonight.
Yeah.
Because this is a little bit of a fortuitous day. It is Master Baker's birthday today. And so members are allowed to turn their mics out if they want because we're gonna do a really quick stirring rendition of Happy Birthday for our man Walter. And a one, and a two, and a one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Walter. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
You baked it?
Day he'll never for now.
See, I'll just try.
He doesn't know the Robert's Rules tricks.
It's in there, look it up. All right, Walter, do you have a student representative update for us this evening?
Yes, I do.
Great, the floor is yours.
Okay, so since the last time that you were updated from the Student Council, we had our first Kids Night Out event of the year, which was on October 17th. We had a little bit lower of an attendance than usual, I think that was just because we were a bit slow getting out advertisement. And so because of the lower turnout, we're gonna hold off on donating the profit to Special Olympics in Massachusetts and wait until we have more profit.
What was your turnout on that first one?
This, uh, last week?
Yeah.
I think we had forty-two kids.
Oh, that's pretty good.
That's pretty good. I can't imagine watching forty-two kids.
And then speaking of the Special Olympics, we are collaborating with Mrs. Smith, the Life Skills teacher, and we're working to raise enough money for Special Olympics to bring the Mobile Polar Plunge to the high school. And hopefully we can get like the community involved in that. I think we have to raise like $2,000 or something, so you know, we have work to do on that. But the profit donated from a Kids Night Out should be like probably about a little more than half of what we need. And then we're also, ION is really taking charge of this and has reached out to the Williston Ice Rink about setting up like bake sales and other things like that throughout those hockey games again this year. And then with the Mobile Polar Plunge, we're thinking of having a month of inclusion, so we're working on this new campaign, Spread the Word to End the Word.
I think I know where you're going with this, and this warms my heart, go.
So, um, we're, wait, what?
Where you, can you give us a, give us the TLDR of the Spread the Word to End the Word?
Okay, so basically it's a campaign to spread awareness and just stop the use of the R-word in the school.
And everywhere, let's just say everywhere, everywhere.
Right, so you know, we're doing that and hopefully that can be a lead-up event to getting the Mobile Polar Plunge to come to East Hampton. Next Saturday, we have fourteen or fifteen people going to the MAS D State Officer Workshop. And then on November 6th, we have the WMAS C Fall Conference, and it's being hosted at East Hampton High School. And then moving into November, we have our Feather a Teacher Food Drive, which has been successful the past couple of years, we've done that. And if you don't know what that is, basically you bring in a pantry food item or some kind of non-perishable, and for every item that you bring in, you get a teacher, or, oh my god, every one item that you bring in, you get a feather. And you put the feather on a teacher that you want to see wear an inflatable turkey costume for the rest of the day before Thanksgiving break. And then all that food gets donated to the East Hampton Community Center.
Can the teachers resist the feathering, like can they turn around away and try to hide from you?
Well, so what we've done in the, well, we have like all the teachers who participate in it, which is, almost all of them, we have their portraits up on the wall. And then you just choose, but the teachers can donate as well and move feathers to another staff member, so.
Savage.
That's, that's good.
And then our next Kids Night Out is gonna be on Friday, November 21st.
Great, excellent, that is our high school update. Master Henry Logana, do you have an update from Mount?
He's gonna do the update with our display.
Okay, do we want to skip ahead to that, or do we want to just do our public speak? Okay, so let's do public speak and then we'll do that? Okay, all right, at this time we will open the floor for public comment. If you are joining us in person, you could please line up at the podium. If you are joining us remotely, just raise your digital hand, and we will give it a minute. Okay, seeing nothing, we are going to close public comment. Move on to the superintendent update, where we'll begin with the MBS Middle School Students Showcase.
Hey, so exciting, it's so nice to see everybody, thank you all for being here. Tonight we have an artwork display. We have teacher Alex Fisher here to show some off, some student work. We have Aleah Martin, Henry Logana, Violet Brazzi, is that right, Brazzi, okay. Eloise Kutcher and June Stackhouse here to show their artwork off. Come on up. Let's see what you, you all brought with us for us this evening.
What's?
Wow, it's amazing. Can you tell us a little bit about this beautiful display?
Hey, Henry, can you go to the podium so we can hear you on the mic? Everyone at home is dying to hear what you're saying, go ahead.
So over the past few weeks, in art class, we've been making camouflage art, where we take like this piece of like scrap paper, and then you like glue it on to like a piece of paper, and then you have to draw over it to try to camouflage it. So as you see, we have these beautiful pictures, and if you can try to find a camouflage like piece, but it's gonna be hard.
That's really cool, that's beautiful.
Do you remember what materials we used?
We used colored pencils, paint, and outlined everything.
Can I presume is this returning to MBS after tonight?
Yeah, and I'm hopefully gonna hang up some more, and if I get some volunteers, do your volunteers help you paint artwork out of your water bowl?
And anytime you have extra artwork, we have a mess of walls up here.
Yes, absolutely.
Love to be considered.
Where would you volunteer, where would you need your volunteers to go?
Um, just to the middle school side of Mount U School, and I don't know, that entryway, I know there's a plastic display, but you could hang over it and just like make it a nice welcoming space by the lobby. I think that would be nice, if that was a magnetic wall, that would be perfect, but.
Somebody write that down, yeah, everybody, write that down.
Middle school entrance and when?
Um, just any time, I think I'm gonna be done with this and with all the classes by the end of next extracation. So next week, my meetings, probably by the end of next week.
And if like, I'm so sorry, if it's, if it's more clear to other people than it is to me, what time of days people could come in?
I'm available during my prep in the morning, but I would have to stay after school, do it on day after school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you get a picture, I mean, take a picture, okay, nobody move, we're gonna get a photo. Yeah, we need it.
Also, we integrated fifth grade this year into the middle school, and Violet wanted to share with you what we learned about in it.
Violet, do you mind getting a little closer to the microphone?
That way everyone can hear you too.
Thanks.
Well, you could hold it one.
Yeah, yeah, hold it up for us, or you can get a helper to hold it for you while you talk, it's up to you.
All right. Would you want me to hold it?
Yeah, okay. All right, go ahead Violet.
Um, well, we're making, they're called Infinity Rooms by, they're created by artists called.
What's her name, Yayoko Sama.
Yayoko Sama, and she, um, she makes art with lots and lots of little dots, and she actually took lots of the time to make every little tiny dot. And, um, so we were gonna make those, and we used, we used these thing called bingo doppers to make circles, and we outlined them with oil pastels, and we got to make any colors and any patterns. And then we were, we were made little, you could make flowers and pumpkins and mushrooms, or like whatever else you want. I made two pumpkins, well, two jackalocks.
Love that.
So cool.
It's awesome. That's amazing, and so Violet, you're in the fifth grade?
Yeah.
And when you said you've joined, so this is like new art exploitation for fifth graders?
When we were white, we had five to eight, and then when we consolidated to schools, we had six to eight, and now we're introducing to get fifth grade activated to middle school a little better, so they know some teachers on the middle school side, they're all doing specials on the middle school side.
Great.
Um, do you enjoy them?
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask, you like that Violet? Nice, what are the other specials you take Violet, aside from art?
Um, I take library, gym, art, steam, health, and music.
Nice, we're not gonna ask her to pick a favorite here in front of everyone, that's great.
You have the advantage of the room, and art is right here, so.
They're all favorites. Anything else y'all wanted to share?
Um, anything from art, Chloe?
Um, we've been working on a lot-ish, kind of. We actually started drawing haunted houses, and some of us are working on building those with artwork. And some of us, like me, are working on paper mache.
Oh, that's so cool. Do you take orders, Eloise?
What do you mean by that?
We'll talk, we'll talk, paper mache is incredible.
Yeah, and also later in the year, come December, we've got an elk grant for a resilient arts community to come in, and they're co-teaching. And we have a whole list of stuff and ideas, we're gonna do wheel felting, we're gonna do like found sculpture, plaster sculptures, adding objects then. And one, one of these days we'll reach out to the community about doing a mural, that would be really wonderful to do. So just try to plan that ahead of time, maybe within the next couple of years or so.
Awesome, and when you talk about when you're planning for these like found sculptures and whatnot, do you have a structure in place to like, are there items the public could be saving or donating?
Of course.
Maybe we could find some space on the website to keep that kind of tally running and have a drop site for that type of stuff?
Yeah, that'd be wonderful, I mean, even in parents' where I could do something in there, I'm on, I'm part of the East Hampton Free Facebook group.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even though I don't live in East Hampton, so I'm part of that one, the North Hampton one, and I should probably do the Turner's one, that's where I live. So I'll have like extra, and I actually could go places and cut things up. But yeah, I'm always looking for recycled materials, any donation of like fabric or jewels or any craft things would be perfect for.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
So.
Turn muted online?
Who is?
You that's cool.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for letting us know.
The little microphone on the bottom? Thank you.
You guys have been good.
Okay, we're good, okay.
Yes.
I don't think you can.
Uh, you can, the mouse. Sorry, Laura.
It's always something.
There you go, now we're good.
Masfina, Nathan, can you tell?
I can see it, looks like we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So thanks to Leah, Henry, Violet, Eloise, June, do I see June? Ah, hello, it's the mic was right through, that was incredible, round of applause. Thank you, thank you so much, this picture, that was great. We got a picture, Sam?
We got a picture.
Okay, all right.
We got several pictures.
All right, awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a student enrollment update, and we did not have anything about this in the package, so you just want to walk us through it.
Great, I have a little slide to show.
Great.
All right. It's, it's been, I'm gonna.
Yeah, which is actually fine, it's in, in here, same, so it's, only those in the room have to hear it same.
You're not the record. I didn't get to hear a same here. We're not gonna do it. Just kidding, we're not. There's just video of us looking at you, which is all going.
Well, no, it should, it should record on the.
The other mic.
Eastern meeting.
Where else at? All right, great, that was easier this time, all right. Um, I'm gonna, I decided that over the next couple of school committee meetings, what we're gonna do is we're gonna do some gap analysis and just some data review. And kind of trying to figure out where we are, where we need to be. And we reviewed the superintendent goal last meeting, we're gonna take a look at some enrollment numbers today. We, our last meeting, we talked about school choice in, school choice out, where were their students going? So I have a little data presentation on that today. Our next meeting, we're gonna go over our MCAS data, we're gonna do a little bit of a facilities overview. December, plan on doing that parent square update, a further gap analysis. January 6th meeting, I plan on doing a listening session update, sort of a culmination of all of the listening sessions, what was said, and you know, sort of next steps, and then our new curriculum update, CKLA, so how is that process going? What is the feedback we're getting, how are assessments going? So it's kind of the plan for the next few months, I thought it was, you know, good to get it out just so people can see and tune in when they're, they're listening. So just, I wanted to give a framework for how we're gonna look at the data, the different types of data that we're going to be looking at. I'm using a text from Shane Safir and Jamila Dugan, and it's called street data. It's just a way to look at data in different types of data. There's this thing called satellite data, it's sort of the high-level overview of data, then we have map data, which is sort of the more granular level, and then you have street level data, it's like really, what's the word on the street kind of a thing? So what are people saying and doing in our school? So I'm, I plan on, you know, just approaching our data analysis through those three buckets. Examples of some satellite data is attendance enrollment data, which we're gonna look at today. So we're gonna be looking at what we're gonna call satellite data. MCAS data, we're gonna take a look at. Map data is that unit assessment, that's that CKLA data. We're gonna be going over some diagnostic and screener data, looking at our Renaissance Star Assessment Data, and the correlation between that data and our MCAS data, and we're gonna be looking at some DESA data. And then street level data will come when I report out during that listening session. I've done learning walks, I've conducted three learning walks with administrators, you know, what, what is, what am I seeing in classrooms? What is the student experience in classrooms? And we're gonna be launching some surveys, we started our first set of surveys to teachers for students to administer today, and that is really looking at equity and belonging. So that's our first data that we're looking at, and that is led by our equity team work. So excited about that data, but to partner that with the data that I'm in a survey, both staff, students, and families, around, you know, again, that sense of belonging, that's very important. I have our district overview slide, which I love to sort of highlight, just as a, who we are as a district. But getting really into it, this is our sort of student enrollment trends, I started in 2015, we're looking at ten years. So if we look at here, it looks like in, you know, 2015, we have about 1,400 students in our local schools, we have about 1,232 now. So there's been, you know, about 200, 200 student decrease. And that's just the pool of students that are in East Hampton. Our homeschool numbers have stayed, you know, relatively, you know, even, we did see a peak in 2020, 2021, which was as expected, because of COVID, a lot more parents, you know, made the decision to homeschool. And then you see the percent of students that are in the district that are attending public schools. So it's our enrollment versus the pool of all of the students and the percent that are going into public. I did flag 23, 24, because that data, we saw an unusual spike, and I see a one in there for the difference between sort of like who is going where, so we are at 98% for the public. So it just, there might have been some reporting thing for that year. But we're consistently about 92% of the students in the district are in East Hampton, are in public schools. Any questions about sort of overall enrollment?
I do have a quick question.
Go ahead, Megan.
Sorry, is it the percent in public schools, is that in our public school district or any public school district?
No, our, yeah, that's East Hampton. Anyone else, Sam?
Um, for the homeschool numbers, does that include students who are getting walk-in services through their IEPs? Are they counted as homeschool students?
If they have a homeschool plan that we've approved.
A superintendent approved homeschool plan?
Yes, that is included in that number.
Maybe we don't know, but is, does it seem like the drop in students comes from any particular high school, middle school, elementary school? Or is it kind of dispersed?
We'll take a look at.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Anyone else? Great, all right, and this is just sort of an overall, sort of like who's in our schools? It's really, it's kind of small, but you know, just some trends, like high needs, if we look at in 2015, 591 of our students were identified as high needs, and then fast forward to 24, 25, 763. Percent, so 54% from 31% over the course of ten years. Our EL population from 15 to 50. We're looking at students of low income from 25 to 39. Students with disabilities in 2015, we're about 18, and to last year, 31.6. I have a question, if no one else has, when we're doing our calculations for low income, I know that we had had discussions when the free breakfast and lunch was initially rolled out, you would see a drop in people filling out the longer, more complicated forms. I know this year we sent out a really nice single sheet consolidated form, how confident are you in our data collecting that we're getting? I would say it's underrepresented of the students that are actually qualified. And we didn't notice any significant tick-up from reporting from the year previous, last year to this year, so I don't know that that new form is, maybe we just weren't missing as many people as we thought? I just don't think people are reporting as frequently. Okay, anyone else have questions? That, the students with disabilities percentage is.
That's a big.
Very unco, for those watching from home, that is higher than the state average, higher than the national average. Yeah, we're about, I think there was only one other district that was higher than us in sort of over 495 area, and that was a district that had probably like, you know, less than 300 kids. So that's a high percentage of students.
I have one question about that.
Yeah, of course, Sam.
Is, um, just, and you, this is more of an opinion question, so you can feel free to say that you don't know. Um, is, is that more like, there are kind of two ways to look at that. One is we have a large number of students being diagnosed with disabilities, and maybe that says something about our school environment. Maybe we need to, like, maybe there's practices that we can engage in that will make, you know, students need less intervention. Or is it just that we have really good child find, and we're really identifying the students who, because that's a problem.
And the percentage of choice in of.
And the percentage of choice in, so.
I think it's a combination, to be honest. I, I think, you know, it would be hard to identify a certain area, but I do think our child find is an area of strength for the district. Can you give the public a thumbnail about what child find is? So it's a way to identify sort of who needs what services very early on, and it's a way to capture, right, early intervention, and it's a way to really, to help reach out in advance. Before kindergarten. Yeah.
We have a responsibility for every child in the city, that, as a school district, we have the responsibility to identify children with disabilities and outreach to them.
And to administer those services beginning at age three.
Yeah, so like, so in, you hear about other districts really, you know, kind of, kind of some contentious conversations around the child find policies or practices. But I have to say, like in my experience in East Hampton, that has always been a strength of ours. So I'm more inclined to think about it from that way, but I'm also like not in the school every day like you are, so. But I was just, just curious if you thought it was more that we're doing a really good job identifying students versus, you know, there's something.
And I think we're also, you know, I think we're, we have really good practices in place for accommodations and team meetings and the follow-up. I think we, you know, we're very, a very supportive district in that regard.
Cool.
Other questions, yes?
I'm just curious, do you dive a little deeper into the data and break it down with looking at these things around the students that are choicing in or choicing out in relation to these, you know, like for example, students with disabilities?
Yeah, we, we do take a look at that, and you know, it's a lottery system too, so, right, we, we open seats, and we do the lottery process, and whatever we, you, you don't ask questions before, right? We, let's say for the record, we don't ask questions before.
Right, right.
Some districts might. So, we, and you know, like, what you get, the students you get.
Yeah.
Yep.
So speaking of that.
Oh, here we go.
Here you go. So where are non-residents coming from? So we see most of our non-residents come from Holyoke, we have choicened 58 kids from Holyoke. And then the rest are kind of a little bit smaller, five from Westfield, five from Springfield, four from Southampton, which brings our enrollment from 1,268 to 1,368. So there's about 100 students that we choice in from other areas. Fascinating. Anyone have questions? No, just a great breakdown.
Just a quick one, so do you also break down this data with when they choice in? Do we, like, if, if we have spots open in 10th grade, do we?
They stay with us.
And so, like, are these, a lot of these numbers coming to us early, or just all over the place?
So we open less seats in pre, in pre-K to five, so K to five, sorry, K to five, there's less because we have strong enrollment numbers in K to five.
Right.
And then we accept more in middle school and high school. And so the way the process rolls out on our side is that midsummer, we get the recommendations from the different buildings about how many slots they're talking about opening, and then we, I would say late spring, early summer, and then we approve those.
Lottery?
Yeah. And then, so, but it's risky too, right? Because then you could have families moving in, and you're like, wow, we opened enrollment seats and we just got 10 new kids in, now we have to open a new classroom. So it is a very delicate, it is a.
Balancing.
Yes, yes it is. All right, so that's where student, where students, non-residents are coming from. Okay, where are they going? So of our pool of students, this is really small, okay. Um, we are choi, students that are in our district that choice out, we see 35 go to North Hampton. We see 19 go to the Chinese Immersion Charter School. We see 19 students going to PBPA, and 78 of our students go to Hilltown. So those are kind of our big buckets, Hampshire, sorry, is another 34. So we lose, we're losing about 200 and change students choosing out. I'd be curious. Smith-Vogue doesn't, Smith-Vogue isn't included because they're enrolled in our district and they go to Smith-Vogue, so.
Although, isn't, isn't there a. Although, isn't, isn't there a way to, some, some people choice into Northampton to go to Smith-Vogue?
I don't think that's how that works.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Do you want to clarify? Or you're, or maybe you're not familiar.
They're, they're East Hampton and they choi- they, they, they vote choice too.
Right.
Let's say there is an eighth grader who lives in East Hampton who choices into Northampton heading into high school. And then instead of attending Northampton High School, Sam was informed by people that they could have the option to go to Smith instead. I do not believe that that is how that works because it's not considered the district school.
They, whatever, they abide by whatever Northampton's enrollment policies are, which I don't know.
I'm gonna look more into it.
Yeah.
I feel like it's leading both of us in the opposite conclusions.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna look more into it.
And it would depend on what year.
Yeah.
So this is just, you know, I think, so what, I'll get to the, what we're gonna do. And I just took a look at enrollment trends in, at Hilltown. We do see that they have higher enrollment numbers in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So I think what I've been hearing is that, you know, some of our students will, um, be in East Hampton Public Schools up until fifth grade and then they go to Hilltown for our middle school. So it's just an area I've been hearing about. So I did look at the enrollment numbers and there does seem to be an increase in Hilltown enrollment. I, I don't know where the students are enrolling from.
We can, there's a history of that too in the district. So that goes back pre-MBS to when we had Whitebrook. And Whitebrook, um, there was like a four, we broke elementary at that point. It was just K through four in Center Pepin and Maple. And Whitebrook had five through eight. So that was a big turnoff. Some parents didn't want their fifth grade students matriculating with eighth grade students. And also, to be very fair, my kids had a great time at Whitebrook, but the place was a straight up bummer full of mold and asbestos. So it was, you know, it turned, it didn't show well.
Rubber gym floor.
So that is, I think that's an inherited problem that we've had and we haven't turned around that narrative much yet.
Yeah, you know, it takes some time. So, um, and I did look back three years and that seems to be a consistent trend for Hilltown, the enrollment increases for middle school. So just thinking about, you know, we know this information. Now that we have this, what are we going to do about it? So what we're gonna do is we are, we're, we put together a survey and I did hear this from listening sessions and parents were saying, you should really ask families why they're leaving East Hampton Public Schools. And it's a fantastic idea. And so from the listening sessions is going to emerge this, this survey. So we're going to look at students that are deactivated from our, our system and just ask, you know, why did you make the choice to go to another district? What was it about that district? And whatever choice, you know, we're just looking for information to improve our district and, you know, to make it the most attractive district. Because, you know, we want students that live in East Hampton to, you know, be with their peers and in East Hampton Public Schools. So we're just gonna ask. And I think it's, you know, we're hoping for an honest feedback and to, to really hear from families about how we can improve. So, uh, and why did they make that choice?
I think it's important for us to consider too that, like, sometimes that choi- the, the point of choice when it first began was to offer this menu of options. PBPA is a beautiful example where it's just a different kind of curriculum built for a different kind of student with a different set of needs. We're not gonna compete with PBTA, PBPA. We're going to be a complement, something like that. I think what we're trying to seek out is who are those people who are just dissatisfied? We're not meeting their requirement of what they expect the average public education experience to be so that we can begin on that work.
Yep.
I think that's a really good point.
Yeah.
To keep in mind.
Yeah.
Oh, it's all within the context, right?
Sure.
You know, some schools are, there's a smaller school. And whatever choice you make is the best choice for your family. And I completely understand and respect that.
We're not attaching judgment to any of this. We want to just see, you know.
Absolutely.
What's that perception?
Feedback, it's that street level data, right? How, you know, why did you make the choice? So we're gonna send this out tomorrow.
Great.
And, you know, excited to just, to hear from.
Are these anonymous?
Absolutely.
Great.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
Any, any other question? Oh, you know what, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you go. Go ahead, you have a question.
How will the feedback be sent? Do you, do you make send to parents of kids in Hilltown or confused?
So if you were enrolled in East Hampton Public Schools and you are no longer enrolled, we're sending out the survey to those parents.
Okay. I would say it was all parents who decided to leave and then.
No, no, if you were here and then you, for whatever reason, we really want to capture the who left East Hampton Public Schools.
Any other questions?
Great. All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your enrollment update. Stay tuned for next level of data.
Love data.
Excited.
Um, this is our second meeting in October. So while we do have the business update with a finance and personal update listed on the agenda, um, Julia is incredible and amazing. Julia Sari Franks, our Director of Business Services. We do not expect her to deliver a monthly report twice a month. So we will be hearing from her about her November monthly report at our next meeting, which moves us along to the school committee discussion. We'll begin with a policy subcommittee update. Sam, are we ready?
We are ready.
All right.
So I've got the AI policy. I believe last time we met, well, actually, let me, I'll leave the AI policy for a second and just do a general update. We are working on some of our building use policies. And, um, um, we're, um, we're gonna be meeting in a couple of weeks to, um, to go over that again. And then I think we'll have a building use policy to bring here for our next meeting.
And by building use, you mean?
So essentially, the public understands, we, um, we no longer have a bunch of the buildings that are alluded to in our school committee policies.
Like if you want to, for example, use the gym at Pepin or whatever.
If you want to go pay fifteen dollars an hour or whatever it was to like rent all of Maple, these ridiculous rates that were like very, very low and not competitive and was actually costing us money.
Because we have to have custodial services.
Pay for the custodial services. So, um, uh, our business director, Julia, sorry, Franks?
Franks.
Franks, yeah. She had the brilliant idea of just taking all of those numbers and building names out and instead, um, just doing a general policy for like how we are, um, the rules that we have around using our buildings. And then, um, those rates will live in, within her purview and we will approve them, uh, if they need to be changed. So in that way, they're not in the actual policy that takes months to change.
So the business director will be looking at them annually, making whatever recommendations she sees.
Based on what is, um, how much things in the world cost today.
For example, we renegotiate contracts, custodial costs increase, so we, you know.
Yep. I've learned a lot about how custodial, um, schedules work. Through doing this, which is, it is actually. So, um, I'll spare the public from that for now. So then the, and then the other thing that we've been working on, which I think we're, we did a first reading of and now we're gonna do our second reading of is our AI policy. And I believe we were, we had some feedback from, um, Student Council about this, and then I believe you guys had talked about it, right?
Jess, Jess is here.
Jess is here. Perfect. Jess is going to do it.
Yeah, sure.
Jess is gonna do it, um, whenever, whenever, whenever it makes sense.
She's ready, yeah.
And I'm happy. There's like multiple computers happening with our tech setup tonight.
We've really gotta up our game.
We've got like.
I say to myself. Oh, here.
You have it?
All right. This reminds me, Jess, my kid's robot printer still isn't working. So we're gonna have to call you.
I can't believe they just haven't had you like cut the like, the important cables and send you a brand new one.
That's a, that's, we're just killing time, guys, waiting for.
Okay. This should work. There we go. All right.
Great.
So, um.
Love this.
I am kind of the head or the chair of the Student Voice Committee. So I was kind of put in charge of this task of collecting feedback on the proposed AI policy. So I was kind of sent the draft policy, um, and I read through it and I made some questions and then I kind of created a survey. So this is how I collected the responses.
That's great.
They have some good recant. Everyone really loves that. We had some QR codes and then a little summary of the policy that students could read. And now, this is kind of, oh, this is kind of the overview of the responses we got.
You got eighty-two. I should have put out candy.
That is good turnout for a survey.
Yeah, and then nineteen from Student Council. So from Student, the Student Council responses is, um, where I'll pull most of the questions and comments. Because I did the survey for the eighty-two people during lunch for like one free little packet of Haribo's. I feel like they don't want to be standing around for five minutes like writing on their phone.
So you bribed them.
Yeah, this is what the form looked like. This is, um, our student walters example. So we have some of the questions and then there was an open response.
You can get ChatGPT.
So there was that. And then the first question was kind of on AI literacy. So basically, do you know how to ask ChatGPT a basic question?
No.
Yes.
Kind of.
So we had a lot of people who had viewed that. And then also, would you call yourself fluent AI?
Oh, interesting.
That is really.
This is the average opinion on AI as a whole.
So, so one is low, ten is high?
Yeah.
Okay.
Meaning negative to positive.
Negative to positive. So like they like, they either like it or they don't like it. They have a positive or negative.
Yeah, so a solid six point oh four. And then this is kind of, I asked like some more personal questions at the start. So this is like how often peop- uh, students are using AI. I think a few teachers filled this out too.
Wow.
And then, should AI be used in schools?
Yes, sure, maybe.
Right down the middle.
Probably.
Sure and yes are the same, no?
What?
Sure and yes?
I kind of had more detail and then I kind of removed it. I had it as a hundred percent on board with having AI in schools, seven, five percent on board, fifty, twenty-five in the grade.
Oh, okay.
But then I just removed those percentages because it kind of looked confusing.
Because you have the other percentages, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just had to change it to the rest.
That is, um, it's great.
All right. And then I just asked, is having just a blanket like general AI policy in the district a good idea? And then students in AI? So this was student feedback on if they should be able to use AI. So that forty-eight percent is forty students.
Just so reflects that it's an unknown.
Yeah, no, I think this, this makes sense.
I know.
And then this is where they think they should use AI. So these were some pre-put in things that I did. Um, and then you could add in other topics.
On tests.
So I put in tests kind of as a little joke.
The test, yeah.
What do they call that, like a, a, a control answer or something?
Yeah.
Just, just to make sure they're not clicking everything.
And then this is students thinking if teachers should use AI.
It's kind of the same percentages as, as.
Ten percent less than yes.
Yeah. Well, they, you know, the teachers get paid, you guys don't get paid.
And then this was on the whole clause about AI checkers and requiring like district approval on, on using AI checkers and then requiring like a human process on disputing like if a teacher thinks if someone's using AI. And then this is on students feedback and AI and grading. A lot of people felt very strongly about.
Yeah.
Use, teachers using AI to grade.
Good for, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm glad to see that, honestly. Like, I, I feel like.
Some depth of thought?
Yeah, like, like, really kind of considering what that would mean and how that would change their experience. That's really cool.
It kind of doesn't really make sense as a, a whole vehicle, right?
Right.
Teachers using AI.
The opposite of pedagogy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then should teachers be allowed to use AI to help create assignments? So like slideshows or different questions? And then, I'm gonna quickly jump to my little questions page. Okay. Let's see. So I'm just gonna read over the comments and concerns and then you can ask questions about that. So, um, one of the comments was, this policy is unnecessary and AI shouldn't be allowed in schools. Introducing AI could potentially kill off fully learning and certain topics. Let's see. Oh, gosh, something happened to this one. Oh. Worried that teachers, not particularly at this moment, but in the future, could stop teaching and AI could fully teach everyone and everything. People will take advantage of the policy, using AI for assignments they aren't supposed to. AI, and then these are some of the more positive ones. AI policy can help teach topics in a different way that certain students may understand better than the teacher's methods. Um, and then AI could help on homework comprehension, allowing students to check answers and find mistakes without having to put too much homework review time into class. And then some questions students had is, when and how would these like AI trainings be? And how would they be introduced into schools, um, into the classroom? And then what type of assignments can you use and not use on AI? And then to what extent, um, AI would be implemented into learning? And then if you used AI on an assignment, would it affect your overall grade on that assignment? And then how clear will the guidelines on fair use of AI be? How will overuse of AI be found? And what will the punishments for excessive use be, if any? And then if I'm allowed to use AI lightly on my assignment, what stops me from using it to do all the work?
Right. Right.
All righty, those are all of those.
That was great.
I've got my one last slide.
There we go.
That's awesome. I really appreciate you doing all this work.
Thank you.
That is like enormously helpful.
Yeah, I have a billion questions.
So we're gonna catch the public up really quick. What we're talking about tonight, this is our third scheduled discussion on an AI policy. So Sam's policy subcommittee created a first draft. We had a first reading. We sent it back with a bunch of notes. And at the same time, Sam kicked it over to the Student Council to collect their feedback, which is what Jess delivered tonight. And so now we have the option to do the second reading. When and if, thank you, Jess, when and if the second reading were to pass, then it would become a fully functional policy in our handbook, in our policy book.
Yeah, and I, um, I want to address some of like, so, one of the things that I think was really cool about your presentation and, and also about the questions that were asked is that this is a really good way to demonstrate the difference between a policy and a procedure.
Yes.
So the policy is like what we set at the school committee. And so policy is just, um, what are kind of our guiding, uh, values? And, um, how do we make decisions? How do we think about specific issues? Um how do we think about specific issues and then like and other things? Another thing that's covered in policy is often like what is definitely not allowed and under what circumstances? Um and and but then the procedures, which is like how a policy is implemented. That is all determined it within the the um school district um outside of the school committee. So like the uh we we have a designate in the policy who's like our A I um kind of our A our, what do we call it? Not officer.
Star? A I coordinator?
A I coordinator, yeah. So we have like our A I coordinator who's gonna be uh somebody in the district who already has a job in the district, who this is just gonna become a part of their job. And this, their job is gonna be coming up with the procedure um around this policy. So the questions that were being asked around like what happens if people get caught using A I or like if we can use it for some things, how are we gonna know that we can't use it for everything? That's all falls within procedure. So we're basically coming up with a policy to say here's our um our values on A I as a school district. These are the things that we um that are important to us. Um these are the places where we definitely don't think it should be used or what what that were like the the fact that teachers aren't gonna be using it for grading, that was really important. That's a part of the policy. Um but we're also designating a lot of the day to day questions for our um our uh A I policy um person. Um who will then communicate back to us? So if there's something that they feel like really needs to be added, um it's it's come up so many times that we've we've gotta add it to the policy. Um or we we missed something that we didn't realize, it's not going the way that we thought it was gonna go. Um they will give us that information, we'll be able to change it then, but also like you've really demonstrated in your survey, like you guys, the students already have the power to give us feedback um about that kind of thing as well. So I would be curious to hear, you know, in a after we've had this implemented for a year or two, I would be curious to see like another survey, you know, and how did how did the students feel about it now because?
That's something I'm gonna touch on before we adopt.
Alright.
So that's that's my, that was just my um, that's kind of my my context for this. So the questions are great questions and I think they're probably mostly um sort of with outside the purview of the school committee.
Fun, right?
Yeah.
We have Tim?
It's I think it's crazy to assume at this point that somebody who is already employed and already has like full time or like educating is going to be able to be an A I coordinator because this is a it's an ocean of or tsunami of um information and that is gonna be available to everybody. It's just a uh, there's a lot more thinking that needs to to be done around it and having a, I mean, I know we we we've talked about how we have to have a policy going forward before this. Um and I think that's great. So I'm just, I want to just make these comments. Well, because I'm thinking of it.
Yeah.
You know, it's nuts to think that a teacher's gonna be, one teacher's gonna be able to handle this in even a part time capacity after a full time job. Cause this is, it's so much to manage and so much to handle. There's that part and there's more, but we'll start with that.
Right. I think it's important to me and I think this might have been embedded after the first read was um a requirement that it at least, that it be reviewed at least once every term.
Yes.
So because it's just gonna change so fast that I wanted to force any future committee to have to look at it.
Yep.
At least once every term.
That's in sections.
To make new kinds of adjustments, right?
It's almost the only policy that would matter is that we need to look at this again like in a month really, you know, but to that this needs to be just reviewed.
Yeah.
And and that our pol- the school committee policy. I think if we're gonna if we're gonna go hands off, I think we should, you know, make sure that we're, not by hands off, I mean, if we're only setting up guardrails, that we should be setting up guardrails, but they shouldn't deflect to a person who's gonna handle this part time or handle this on whatever capacity. We really need a a another, almost another position to.
Well, Sam, I would love to hear Sam and Michelle's thoughts on the coordinator.
I will say this, this sounds like a like when you kind of, it's a four page policy, there's a lot of different things to keep in mind. This is already a job, I mean, we we already, we have, we have a, we have a lot of jobs that are like this, that are part of people's jobs. That's a pretty normal thing in public school. So, you know, it's, and I don't know, you can speak more to the staffing of it. Um uh but I I I don't think this is adding as much of a lift as it might up appear.
Initially.
Initially.
We might find in a year or two.
We might find.
Have to create point seven S E or something.
That we we do have to do at some point, but I don't think at this point it's that big of a lift.
Well, we don't have the money to do it today and we need a policy today.
Yeah, exactly.
Michelle, what do you think?
So I I think Julianne, I think feels pretty confident that she could start this work and lift it. I think we just have to be like, cause there are other um policies, like the plagiarism policy that support this policy. Uh but I think we need clear practices in place and like Jess had mentioned, what is the training and professional development gonna look like for teachers? To prepare them for this work. So I do think that from our end, we have to do more around what is the P D? And then what are what are our practices?
Yeah.
Because the policy sort of sets the expectation, but we have to say, alright, step one, if this happens, then this happens.
Yeah.
We need a flow chart for how we are going to then handle issues that arise.
And it, we do have.
Yes, once, I'm gonna pause everybody. Does anybody have questions for Jess? You can step away from the podium.
I also do have one question.
Okay.
Um I had like, while I was sitting there on my free candy table, um I had like six teachers approach me on the hunt for free candy. Um and also and also to wonder and ask about what I was doing. So they were, a lot of them wanted to give like more detailed feedback and stuff. And I was wondering if I should create a separate survey and have Mister Evans send that out to teachers and then get responses from them.
I think their responses aren't gonna impact policy, but I do think it will impact practice. So for sure, I think that would be a really good next step for us to help identify. Alright, so if a teacher encounters it, encounters suspected use of A I, what are their next steps? And we do say reach out to the A I coordinator in our policy. But what do, you know, like how soon? Is there reform? Like all of like that stuff, we have to iron out as a as a district. And I think teacher's voice in that process is important.
Yeah, just, I'm concerned. My concern is.
I'm, you're next. Anyone else have questions for Jess? Jess has any further questions?
Thank you.
You can stay at the podium or you can have a seat with you. Tim?
I really appreciate.
Thank you. That was wonderfully incredible.
So anyways, that's, I mean, I I'm not sure what our job is here again regarding something like this. My, I'm just gonna say that my fear is like bringing a knife to a gunfight, you know, is kind of a I don't want us to be naive. I don't want us to wander into something and get hit cream.
Right.
By A I, cause A I is is changing the the whole face of the world.
We have to remember we're not alone in this either. We are one district out of three hundred and fifty districts in the Commonwealth, out of fifty states in the country that are just starting. So my consolation personally is we're gonna implement something because we need a, we need a baseline. This committee's term ends in two months, which means that in the next twelve months, the new committee will be forced to look at this again to check in. So at least there's that, and then we'll know that biannually it's getting at least, which no other policy gets that regimented review.
Have we had, do we have any built in mechanism for um this to get reviewed sooner than that? If people feel that they're being overwhelmed, that this A I thing is much larger than I mean.
I mean.
Yes.
Unexpected.
It's in the policy.
Yeah.
Um so it will be regularly revisited and evaluated to ensure that it remains relevant and up to date with the changing technology landscape. When revisions to this policy are recommended, the Gen A I coordinator will notify the superintendent, school committee and policy subcommittee chair. This policy will be reviewed and revised by policy subcommittee in consultation with the Gen A I coordinator by the first July of each new term.
That's perfect. So every complaint at the micro level will get lifted to the macro school committee automatically by virtue of that policy, which is.
Right, to be reviewed along the same schedule.
No, that's saying there could be additional reviews.
Yeah.
If if they're arising from complaints like teachers saying, hey, we're starting to see this funky thing happening.
Yeah.
That is by virtue of this policy getting lifted automatically to that coordinator who has to lift that automatically to the school committee. So we have to be notified.
Right.
We may decide, it's a little wrinkle turn now, let's watch it, or we may decide, put this on the agenda, we need to fulsome discussion, you know, the they would be forced to address it one way or the other.
Right.
Whether they decide to step away, they might, we're not in control of the next committee, but.
So but that's something that could could come up at every every school committee meeting, any school committee.
It would, by virtue of any complaint made.
Be on the agenda.
Yep. Yeah.
Any complaint made by the, yep.
By anyone working it on the ground, which is nice.
Yeah.
It's nice.
It's a lot.
And I'd also say that, you know, we we don't exist in a vacuum. You know, I know that the Collaborative for Educational Services is working on this now. Like a lot of different school districts are are working on their policies now and so, you know, as this wheel comes together, we'll be able to see what best practices are. We'll be able to adapt the policy and we'll be able to take the things that are really great and leave the things that don't really work. And I guess eventually A I will write us an amazing policy.
So something that I wanted to clarify real quickly as well is we we have to have a policy in place by the beginning of this year?
No.
No, that's a different, that's that's for our um, that was for our competency determination.
Oh, right. This policy, I I just personally felt compelled to get something on the books.
It was, it was brought to us by Julianne in February and so this is in response to a request from the district for a policy on the books.
I'm just, our buildings are new, their tech level is higher, like it just felt more pertinent to me.
We had a, there was, and there was also a situation in another school district um where a uh a student used A I to write a um an essay and received a a failing grade because of his use of A I and then he failed the class and his family sued the school district because there was no A I policy um in place that said that that counted as plagiarism. So like that, and I don't know, I'm not super conservative around avoiding lawsuits, but um I think this is an easy one to avoid by having a policy.
So just quickly, um because I wasn't involved in the in development of this A I policy, I came on late.
Right.
So I was.
Well, I mean, you were involved in the development of it, you were just.
Not from the genesis meeting?
Yeah, you got involved in at at when we were about halfway through it, yeah.
Right. So anyways, just real quick and then I'm I'm done with this, but my my thought about this policy is that the the least amount of policy we can have is is probably the best way to go until we have some idea what we're facing going forward. That like later, the next school committee or whoever, um the next school committee needs to to look at this. It needs to be something that can be, I don't know if it can be forced onto their agenda somehow or if if we can have something in the, what the council does now that can force them to look at this when.
The answer is no, aside from complaints to staff.
Right.
If we pass that. If we were to pass that. If we do nothing, then there is absolutely nothing that will require them to ever consider it, period.
Yeah.
Um so I think we, at this point, if we get a second read and a second, the second read it will be counted as motion and then the second would put it on the floor, then we can have further discussion. I just don't want anybody to feel like I'm cutting them off, but this is a long.
Do you want, do you want me to read the whole thing?
Do we have a copy? You have to read the whole thing.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of it, like, champs?
It was not in the packet.
Okay, I'll read it then. Everybody get ready for my dulcet tones.
I'm ready.
So this is the um East Hampton Public Schools Generative Artificial Intelligence Policy for K to twelve uh teachers and students. Section one, purpose, the mission of the East Hampton Public Schools in line with Desi's educational vision is to ensure that students' education prepares them to live meaningful and productive lives and to fully engage in work, in civic life and in personal and intellectual growth. Strong indicators from research and economics point to generative A I, Gen A I, as a key technology that is becoming increasingly central to many domains of our social, political and economic lives and that all people will benefit from having fluency in Gen A I concepts and use. Learning to be a skilled and ethical user of Gen A I is part of the preparation that students need for the future and a component of becoming a digitally literate citizen as described in the Commonwealth's Digital Literacy and Computer Science Curriculum Frameworks. Therefore, the purpose of this policy is to support the wise and appropriate use of Gen A I in the context of teaching and learning to help strengthen students' skill with technology, aid deep learning and creative thinking and help de- develop students' ability to engage ethically with the digital world. The purpose of adopting this generative artificial intelligence policy is to provide a broad guiding framework for responsible, ethical and creative use of Gen A I in our school district by teachers and students. It is not a comprehensive policy to govern all possible uses of Gen A I by by all people in the district. Um so section two, definitions, generative A I refers to machine learning models that are trained on vast data sets and are intended to create new similar data. They can be used to generate text, images, code, video, audio and other forms of content. Gen A I can come in the form of standalone tools such as chat G P T, Claude and Magic School or as a component part of another piece of software such as the image generator in Canva or the Help Me Write extension in Chrome. Uh Gen A I fluency. East Hampton Public Schools understands Gen A I fluency as the constellation of skills, mindsets and knowledge that a person needs if they are to use or engage critically with Gen A I. Components of Gen A I fluency include understanding the basic underlying technical functions that make Gen A I work and therefore what it can do well and what it cannot do well. Recognition of a range of ethical domains that are relevant to Gen A I, including but not limited to the possibility of bias, data privacy and safety issues and environmental concerns. Awareness of information quality concerns such as unintentional A I hallucinations and the possibility of disinformation. Ability to discern when Gen A I is an appropriate tool for a given task and when it is not. And the ability to use Gen A I tools wisely, appropriately and effectively through prompt engineering strategies. Um section three, instructional uses of Gen A I. Uh professional learning, the district will provide regular and ongoing professional learning support to all educators to help them explore and understand educational uses of Gen A I equity and justice considerations, data privacy concerns and other relevant topics. Um school leaders will regularly assess teachers' professional learning needs related to Gen A I. Uh the classroom uses, the superintendent will designate an administrator to serve as the Gen A I coordinator. The Gen A I coordinator will maintain a list of Gen A I tools and applications that the district endorses, including information about the relevant data privacy agreements that the district has with the Gen A I vendors. When teachers use Gen A I in the classroom, it will be to supplement, not supplant, instruction. Educators will transparently disclose via A P A or M L A citation and or verbally describe to students all instances of Gen A I used for instructional purposes. Educators will follow all legal and data privacy guidelines to ensure that student data and privacy is not put at risk. And students are expected to adhere to the district's acceptable use policy and all other relevant behavioral and academic integrity policies and guidelines when using Gen A I. Uh digital literacy and twenty first century skills. Students will be given regular opportunities to engage with core concepts and practices related to Gen A I to help them gain fluency with Gen A I. Students will have opportunities to learn about ethical issues that arise from Gen A I. Students will learn how to critically evaluate information generated by or possibly uh generated by or uh possibly generated by Gen uh Gen A I. Uh grading and assessment, this is adapted from Uxbridge. Um the district encourages the professional use of A I for formative and summative assessments uh to improve the efficiency of grading and feedback. Teachers will ensure that A I supported assessments align with curriculum standards and maintain the academic rigor and fairness of the grading process. Students and caregivers must be informed when A I is used in the assessment of work and have the option to request human grading for any assignment or assessment. Students and caregivers may sign a form at the beginning of the year explaining and agreeing to this policy. This form will be generated and managed by the Gen A I coordinator. This next section we we added based on the last um conversation. Plagiarism and cheating detection. Teachers may use Gen A I plagiarism detectors that have been vetted and approved for use by the district. Uh um A I plagiarism detectors are currently unreliable and as of this time may not be used by teachers in this district. When student work is flagged as plagiarism or cheating by such detectors, teachers will first have a conversation with the students, build understanding about how and why the student used Gen A I and about appropriate and ethical use of Gen A I. And the teacher will then follow school and district discipline codes, academic integrity codes and other policies and guidelines with consultation from the Gen A I coordinator if necessary. And again, just because you guys don't have it in front of you, the the important part to pay attention to is that currently there aren't any that we can use.
That's right.
But if there is, um it will have to be run through the um through the Gen A I person. Data privacy and legal guidelines, any Gen A I tools endorsed by or used in the district will comply with all relevant laws and guidelines related to user data, including student data. Uh students and families will be informed of the extent and purpose of any student and family data that is shared with the Gen A I systems. The district will develop and disseminate guidelines to help teachers and students understand considerations related to Gen A I and cybersecurity. And uh legal use, all Gen A I applications endorsed by this district district will comply with local, state and federal laws and regulations. They will be reviewed regularly by the Gen A I coordinator to ensure compliance with legal standards. Incident response, the committee expects its administration to follow the district's incident response plan appropriate to the nature of the incident such as cyberbullying, data breaches, plagiarism and et cetera for responding to incidents involving Gen A I. That was another change that we made because it had just said incident response plan and we were like, what incidents? What are we talking about? It was about like our specific response plans for cyberbullying and and plagiarism and whatnot. Uh the Gen A I coordinator will be responsible for ensuring that the appropriate incident response plan is followed for the nature of the incident. Um equity and accessibility, the committee expects its administration to develop guidelines for ensuring that Gen A I is used in a way that is equitable and accessible to all students. And finally, review and revision, this policy will be regularly revisited and evaluated to ensure that it remains relevant and up to date with the changing technology landscape. When revisions to this policy are recommended, the Gen A I coordinator will notify the superintendent, school committee and policy subcommittee chair. And this policy will be reviewed and revised by the policy subcommittee in consultation with the Gen A I coordinator by the first July of each new term.
Uh can I get a second?
Oh, I'm recording that.
Eric, is that a second?
Thank you. Uh okay.
Like Sue. So the motion's on the floor. Um for everybody who just listened to that, apologies, but this is legally what we have to do. We have to read it into the record, not once, but twice.
Play it back when you need to fall asleep tonight.
Yeah, there you go.
Well done, though.
You know, I brought my tea for a reason.
Um, okay, any other questions?
A couple.
Yes, Megan.
Um I think you mostly did this. Did you highlight all of the changes, Sam, as you were reading?
Yes. So that was the three point, the plagiarism and cheating detection and then the um review and revision.
Perfect.
Um and then the uh incident response.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, when was it our first read?
It was when I was in the airport, I think.
Which was a month and a half ago?
Okay, I just wanted to confirm then like remind us all that there's time, there's been time for public to hear this. The students have seen it, like I just. Yes, we deleted it twice to make sure that we had time to gather all.
August?
I thought it was the first September meeting.
So actually, I have it on here. My, the first, the first reading was July twenty seventh.
Okay.
And.
Oh, it was back on in September and we kicked it to get the student input.
So we could get student input.
That's right, yeah. So this has been considered.
We've considered this one a lot.
And then before the first reading to the full committee, this was considered in two or three meetings?
Three policy meetings.
Of the policy subcommittee, okay.
And again, I uh wanna also do like a major shout out to um Julianne who.
Yeah. Julian Levin, our grants and curriculum coordinator.
Our grants and curriculum coordinator who put this together. Who's going to be our A I coordinator and has been acting as such essentially. Um and who um has worked on this with, I believe, an intern or a student teacher last year or something. It was, it was cool, like it was a neat um project that they did together, so. Um that is where they did most of the research and um mostly they mostly put put this together. It was great.
I sense more questions. I have one more.
That's fine.
It's little, it's little. But that one section that you were um describing to us where there are none of the checkers are approved.
Yes, that was.
That you've written into the policy, you've written in, the policy right now that you've written in that because none are approved, none are allowed right now?
Yeah.
Does, do we want that in the policy? Because then the Gen AI coordinator would not be able to make a decision and implement it.
Well, I think.
They would have to come to us and we would have to approve the checkers.
We would have to approve it.
Before it was in the policy.
Yeah, and I would, I would advise, that's such a big change.
Correct, converge, want to confirm. And we saw the kids voicing that concern too, like that's something we want to vet pretty exhaustively before we put it in the policy.
Okay, Eric, did you have a question?
I had thoughts about the survey, but I don't know if that's relevant.
Sure.
Yeah, I just was, I thought it was promising that the kids were much more critical than you might assume. I think that at the end of the day, for the majority of kids, I think half the kids were on the five and below and how much they like it. Six and above was just over half, and I think that that shows that, I mean, our main objective is to help kids become critical thinkers. And when you look at the reward of critical thinking over the reward of just saying, hey, how much is this? And then it gives you an answer. It's undeniable that even for kids, it's, they want to think and they want to dive into knowledge. So I thought that was promising to see. I think they're skeptical as much as we are. But I also thought it was interesting to see how unsure they are with AI. And I think that's what you had alluded to about professional development and helping teachers. Because we know these kids are bathed in technology, they know the technology, and they're still kind of like, I'm not quite sure. So for the adults in our schools, the teachers, we need to really make sure that, yeah.
They're really well supported.
Really well supported.
I think that, like, that's such an important point to remember, and also, I don't know if this is like just something about like getting older or something, but I feel like every year I get like more and more worried about kids because they seem so different from me culturally, like, and just what I remember of being a kid, and it's like, nice to see this because I'm like, oh, we're all like living in the same world. We all have the same concerns and.
For now.
For now, but like, you know, we're not as different as it feels like sometimes. So I appreciate, I appreciate you guys doing that work and bringing that perspective forward.
Yes, Linda?
Yeah, I just want to just sit here and have a moment to say that, you know, we're at a this time that this is going to be policy that in a very, very short time is going to be changed radically because of what, what we're dealing with, the very nature of what AI is. I understand, you know, when you say the tsunami, all of this coming in, it, it's probably going to be the most helpful tool in many ways that we can even imagine. We're sitting here and almost looking at it in this punitive somewhat way, but in reality, it's going to change the way that we can educate, you know, and that we'll all be educated. I personally use AI almost every day. I do it in ways that I feel are ethical, you know, but so there are ways that you can use it and develop, and I love that part of the policy, that we talked about that in the policy. Recognizing that this is going to be something that critical thinkers are going to need to have as much as not have, you know, because in the future you could do deep dives on things and then say, what is that? Is that deep dive really good over here? Is this, and that's going to change the way that we even analyze everything. So that's all, I just, you know, and I also want to say that I recognize that, and for you Laura, if this was you really wanting to push, you know, getting this on here that.
Well, let's see, that starts with Sam.
Yeah, but you know, but getting, you know, and I think that was after I left. No, actually, we started talking about policy, but I was still on policy.
Yeah, we did.
Because I can remember Ben and I talking a lot about it.
Yep.
And so having something and having books and recognizing this can be ever evolving, like so, as education has been.
That's right. Yes, Mayor Derby.
I think that this is, you know, I reflect on when we changed from typewriters to computers. Because that happened when I was in high school.
Hello, hello, compatriot.
Yes, and it was, it was funny listening to people talk about how computers were going to change everything and how, you know, they were really fearful of it. And I think that it's important for us to recognize this is going to be a tool, and if it's used appropriately, it can be a tool that can be used for a lot of really useful ways that can really help people become critical thinkers. And I think it will be really interesting to reflect on this, like, maybe even a few years from now, but to see how this holds up over time and to see the evolution of this technology is going to be really interesting to kind of take a, put a little pin here and then look back in a few years.
Absolutely.
I'm excited to do that.
Julia Sari Franks is not with us this evening. She, as well as myself, is a former history teacher. And so I will just point out, you can trace that farther back. You can say they did this when television came on, they did this when radios came on, they did this when the printing press was elevated. So, yeah.
Exactly, why I was, yeah, this is just the beginnings of something.
Right, yeah. Anybody else have questions, comments? We do have a vote on the floor, so if we're done with questions and comments, then I will roll call vote. Righteous. Tim, do you want me to begin or end with you, my friend?
Either or.
Okay, let's begin with you, Tim.
No.
No, Eric?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
I'm gonna skip myself now, Sam?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Laura Scott, aye. So that is six aye, one nay. Thank you, Tim, I appreciate you. Motion carries, and we, the next committee that will be seated in the first week of January will be required to take a look at this by July.
Okay.
So we'll have.
Whoever they are.
Whoever they are.
Whoever they.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's certain odds and buts, some of us will be here, I don't know which ones, logistically impossible that all of us will be gone. All right, so that is it for the AI policy. It feels like two hours ago we started that conversation.
Feels like.
Sam, anything else from the policy side of things?
Uh, no, nothing.
Great. Yeah, oh, yes, my friend, go ahead.
So our last meeting, I talked about like advertising clubs, and over like the week I saw some, and I thought that was really cool.
That you yanked those levers of power?
Yeah.
You saw some results. Democracy works, everybody, democracy works.
And all you have to do is sit through a really long.
Um, I'm glad to hear that. Did you join anything, anything good?
No, but my sister might join a theater club.
Oh, cool.
Which she saw, and then I have another thing to add. So I asked some students around in eighth grade and like any changes they want with school, and most of them said, uh, no ST math. They're not fans of that.
What are your personal feelings on ST math, Henry?
I mean, I just do it, I like, like the extra practice. But I feel like a lot of like the games you have to do in it are really tricky. And it's, instead of like math, it's more like just trying to like how to use it well, because it is kind of confusing.
Right, interesting.
Yeah.
We should be revisiting now, we'll be discussing our curricula in January. You'll be here.
Yep.
I may not, but you will. All right, thank you for that.
Really wanted you there, Laura.
Um, so this is what you get for setting the bar so high, Justin Walter. See what we have now? Thank you, Henry, delightful monsters. Um, finance subcommittee update?
I don't have any.
Great.
No finance.
Perfect, yes, there are no finances.
That's about, that is about to kick off, everybody.
That's a joke.
Yes, okay. Um, CES update?
Um, I, I put myself on the CES search committee for the new director. I'm one of the Hampshire County reps on that.
How many folks are on the?
There are four, I believe, from each county for the, or three from each county.
More manageable.
And then there's a couple of the cabinet members from CES, and there's a union member.
What is their timeline, Sam? Okay, roughly, when do they expect to be interviewing?
Um, hold on, let me pull that up, because I want to give you the right answer.
Okay.
Hold on. Um, I had it a second ago.
Just like a month.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna look at my notes. Um, maybe. Okay, so we're gonna be, it's gonna be Jan- January is, I believe, when the interviews are gonna be scheduled for. Um, and so we should have somebody new pretty quickly on like a superintendent position. Like, it's not like it's gonna start with the new school year, you know? So it'll start pretty quickly. We're working with a company called AESA, which is a education, or it's kind of like a, it's actually kind of, it's, it's a sort of education adjacent search company for organizations like the collaborative. Um, and it's in Texas, from Texas, the guy that we're working with is very Texan. Um, but he's actually like really good, I really, actually, he was a great man.
That actually is doing a lot of work.
I'm just saying.
I have a lot of family in Fort Worth, Dallas.
Look, I'm not saying anything, look, I'm an Eagles fan, okay? Um, but, but I, um, no, what I meant is that like, we, we thought we were gonna want to go with somebody more local, he actually like just really gets the way that collaboratives work.
Excellent.
Was surprising to me. So, um, so yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's going good, we're get, they're doing like a lot of um, kind of feedback groups with the staff that work there, with the unions. Um, they're kind of coming up with the structure of, you know, the brochure that's going out. Just got a copy of that to look through. So anyway, I'm on another search committee, even though I said I wasn't going to do any more search committees ever again, and it's actually really fun, I've had a good time with it, so.
Good for you.
Yes.
Thank you for representing us.
Happy to represent us in that search.
Yep. We appreciate it, they're very lucky to have you.
Um, yeah.
Right, MBS playgrounds?
Um, I just, earlier today, saw that a quote had been sent through from Miracle, so now we have two.
Okay.
And we're gonna set some meetings up and.
Those are the two that you had sought, right?
That's right.
Yep, great.
So there's miles to go before we sleep, but we have another piece of information.
Wow.
Sorry.
No, I mean, okay, that's a choice.
But people, people, before we play, sorry, there's miles to go before we play.
There we go.
Um.
That can be our slow.
Slow, steady process.
It's great, though, it's, it's working.
It's happening.
Um, that all for them?
That's all.
Uh, Master Gaia, do we have a wellness update yet?
We are meeting.
It's been two weeks.
Your meeting is?
Twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Of October?
Twenty-eighth.
All right, great, which is also ragshack.
That's awesome.
Okay, so way to go, guys.
Wellness and ragshack definitely go together.
My wife will take the kids and that's okay.
No, we can, we can move it.
No, we can't.
Just saying.
Susan doesn't want to be here for ragshack.
I heard about it.
He can bring you tootsy rolls.
He can bring you tootsy rolls. Somebody's got to talk to them about those tootsie rolls, anyway. You need a policy about being anti-tootsie rolls.
Yeah.
Fiscal crisis sign-on letter.
Um, I will have some updates, so.
We don't, we're not, this says vote, we're not voting on that.
We're not voting on it, but I'm, so I, I talked with our friend Jesus Deleva, who we worked with last year.
Magnificent unicorn of a man.
Who has moved from Greenfield to North Adams, and we've talked a lot about homeownership and how how hard it is when you first buy a house that's falling apart. But he and I talked the other night, he's been working with the MTA on, he was aware of, he was not aware of the letter that they sent us, but he's been working with them on these initiatives. So what they're actually trying to do is get, there are seven policy, or seven
Pieces of legislature.
I'm so sorry, every time you ask me to say anything, I like lose the ability to speak.
That's right.
Um, but, um, so there's seven pieces of legislature, that's kind of what that we, that we were meant to be endorsing. It's a little unclear.
Pause here, so we had this conversation in our meeting two weeks ago. It was a very prolonged conversation, I think, because we really didn't have the full picture, and nobody was here to present the information, so.
So it's seven pieces of legislature that MTA is asking that local communities endorse.
Right.
Um, so that then our representatives might endorse it and vote for it. And it's all related, it's, it's all stuff that supports kind of the general vision of the resolution we signed last year around school funding that we sent to our representatives. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to write, I'm going to take those seven pieces of legislature and put it all into one thing that we can sign as a, and endorse as a group and send to our colleagues in other districts.
So that packet is going to be sent to us, and we're also going to send it to the EEA, which is our local teachers' union. I'm going to extend an invitation to the offices of both Rep. Gomez and Senator Vilas. Senator Vilas isn't here in C two, but he could send someone from his office.
Yeah.
Um, so we are going to request their presence on the eleven eighteen meeting. If they can't make that down for the backup, it's December nine.
Yeah.
So we will be discussing, this will be an item on the agenda for discussion on the day that I can get some representation from.
I think that's awesome, I think, because I think that's really going to have the most impact, is if we can get them to be a part of that conversation. Um, and then I would like to send it out to our neighbor districts and our city council as well.
That's right.
Funny.
Yes.
Didn't we discuss this last?
Yeah, remember, it was just like the weird, you could only as a singular person choose to sign it or not.
And is that not where we, that's where we decided to leave it, right? Was that as a single?
That's right.
Individ, like it can be individually signed.
That's right, and what, what I suspected but couldn't speak to at the time is that there was actually a larger movement about putting forward actual legislation rather than vague list of priorities, and there are these seven bills.
Yeah.
And so this is what we are trying to better understand and decide whether or not this is worth endorsing.
And they're basically what we passed last year. Like substantially, it's all this, it's all the ask that we made last year when we, when we wrote that resolution and passed it. So I kind of feel like it would be, since we have legislation now, we should just sign on to that, so.
Agreed, and we're also trying to build a structure so that when these type, you know, if we're facing a lot of questions from a federal government that, for example, like fired half of the DOE several months ago, we sued them to stop those firings, and then a week and a half ago, they fired the other half that were left there. So as we're trying to figure out our footing and how to push that, what we're trying to do is build something more effective than like, I also support this idea, we're trying to create the scaffolding so that we have a system where we're automatically sending this out to neighboring communities, we have joint meetings. So rather than six city officials signing a piece of paper, you have twenty-six districts saying, we are unanimously are in support of this legislation, and this is why. Go ahead.
I thought we were moving this up to the board of, whatever that is. Thank you.
Right, yeah, so I circle back to the, they didn't know what we're talking about. So Sam did the background and said, okay, this is actually originating with NTA, with the statewide teachers' association and their union. So we are now capturing that legislation, which I think is something we can more easily sink our teeth into rather than the vague priority list, which is what was sent to us, actionable items.
I, I will produce a thing to look at.
Yeah.
And provide it in advance, we can all.
Yeah, and we're not, yeah, we don't need to have a prolonged conversation tonight, I think we just wanted a bookmark.
I just wanted to put it out there.
Yes, what we talked about last time, that's not done, we're not fully prepared to continue the conversation, but it will be coming in either November or December, when we can have, be bending the ear of Mr. Gomez, Mr. Vilas.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was interested in.
We could also invite Joe Commerford, who to my knowledge does not support much of this legislation and maybe many of her constituents might be interested to learn that.
It might be good to ask Joe Commerford if she would as well, so.
Anyway.
I'll reach out to her.
Okay, uh, so that is the fiscal crisis sign-on letter. Uh, we're gonna move on to action items. Um, Megan, you want me to read these so that you can do your secretary thing?
Um, yeah. Yep.
Megan is taking notes for us this evening. All right, um, all right.
There you go.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular session meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Uh, motion to approve and release the minutes of the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five executive session meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Sam?
Yep.
Okay, I couldn't tell if that was you.
That was me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Uh, motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Can I get a, thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric, motion carries? Motion to approve the school payroll dated October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents?
Second.
Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained. Abstained.
Thank you, Eric, motion carries? Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five in the amount of seven hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty eight cents?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Eric, motion carries? Motion to approve the superintendent goal plan proposed at the October seventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Um, any questions about that? Does everybody remember that? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Okay. That moves us to the transportation appeal. Tilby?
Yeah, friend.
Yes.
I was kind of looking through more of the discussions and.
Sure, absolutely. You've seen us.
Yeah, and I didn't want to leave that form, to be honest, but.
Right. So if you would mind, I'm just going to lead up. I lost my pen cap. Be with you shortly. All right. Um, so what this is for the public, these don't happen often, so they may not be familiar with this. This is an opportunity for residents to appeal when there is a disagreement or misunderstanding revolving around our school bus transportation policy.
Yep.
And so that is what you were here to speak to tonight.
That's correct.
So if you would like, um, I think it'd be great to hear your narrative or to kick us off and then.
Sure.
Try to corral the questions for you.
Please feel free to second with questions at any point.
Sure. Raise your hands, folks, and I'll call on you. All right.
So.
Mr. Tilby?
Three years ago, I was having my kids to take, uh, sign on to take the bus to school. They go to Hilltown Charter School. I currently have a sixth grader and a fifth grader.
And you're a resident of East Hampton?
Sorry, yes, resident of East Hampton, yes. I was told they have to pay a fee for it, which, I had to pay the fee, I have to pay the fee, it's part, part of the deal. Uh, upon review of it, I found out that if you live two miles or more from school, you don't have to pay the fee. I did quick Google search on it. Hey, my house is two miles from the school, it says. I thought it'd be pretty clear. I, uh, was later told, no, I have to pay the fee. I disputed this with the previous superintendent and, to be honest, it didn't go that well. I, uh, was told that a police officer, or sorry, a public safety officer had reviewed this distance and it came to one point nine minus. I was, this is really close, keep in mind, that distance you were talking, a couple hundred feet makes a difference.
Hmm.
I inquired about this, I asked, well, what driveway was used for the school? And I was given this quote actually is, you can pay the fee or not use the bus, I'm not going to argue details on this matter. I thought that was, you know, kind of set a good tone for me to not be happy with things, but it kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I have to pay the fee and move on with life. This year, two weeks before, oh, one week before school started, I'm informed my sixth grader was not eligible to take the bus because we lived two, more than two miles from the school. I've already disputed this and I knew in my mind I was correct. I drove the distance to the school and sure enough, it hit two miles in the parking lot. And I thought, okay, this just can't be right. I continued to dispute it. I had the pleasure of taking a, uh, drive with, what was his name? I do apologize. Um. Can't remember his name, I do apologize.
I think it might have been Detective Lieutenant Alexander.
That's correct, yes.
Lieutenant Detective?
Yeah.
Yes.
He drove for me from my house to Hilltown Charter School.
Hmm.
He confirmed the distance to be one point nine miles in front of the school on O'Neal Street. However, when you pull into the school before hitting either entrance or, or either drop offs, you, you pass two miles.
Hmm.
And I'm thinking here, okay, well, it may have just been a miscommunication or something about the details of this. I should be all set. Then I was informed that the distance is actually measured from the school to bus drop off, which was never, which is not in the school policy. Transportation policy states to the school. So I was, I'll be honest, I was very upset by this because it's a change, the policy is not being adhered to, to the word, it's being interpretation of the policy. The school bus drop off spot is not even on school property and it's not labeled. So based on that, I'm looking, saying, we're looking at a kind of made up point on the street, that city owns not school property and the policy is stating to the school.
Would, a small question?
Sure.
Would, um, would your situation create, have to create an extra stop for that bus in order to keep it under two miles or, or are you talking about the drop off point for all children on the bus?
Drop off point for all children on the bus going to Hilltown. Or the bus stop located on O'Neal Street.
Yep.
Um, I disputed this again and I was told that, no, it's the bus, school bus drop off. And that's why I'm here, because I don't feel the policy is really been adhered to. And now I'm looking at this also saying, well, gee, in another year or so, this is going to come again with seven older, another child. As fortunate is the policy right now is, well, it's not the policy, it's the practice right now, that if a child has a younger sibling who is eligible for the bus, we're letting them take the bus still. And I thought, wait a minute, now when my, my oldest son is now out of the school system, or out of that school, I should say, my youngest son won't be able to ride the bus anymore, most likely, or have to rely upon the, uh, this is working out.
You mean, when your younger child kind of ages up, hits that like fifth grade?
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
That, there's a very good chance if the fill the bus program's not being used or is overfull, I will be told he is not eligible anymore.
Right.
And that's really where I'm at today, is that it's, I feel like I'm not being, the policy's not being adhered to, the wording of it. And the other part that had me quite concerned is that, looking at the situation now, the bus measurement spot is being used on O'Neal Street. We're not entering into school property at all. The entire one thousand five hundred foot drive, Mountain View, is being utilized. The bus drop off spot is located on Mountain View property. The bus drop off spot for Hilltown is not on school property. That makes a difference.
Yeah, I think, I, I think a useful point of clarification, because I, I don't want to misreference the truth, because now the po, your, your position is the policy isn't being adhered to. When I'm listening to your narrative, it kind of struck me as maybe the policy was a little too vague and is leaving, if it's saying to the school, that it may not be as precise to describe that as not being adhered to as it's a little subjective.
Oh, it has very much so, yes. Because if the policy was in effect saying to the school bus up, bus drop off, I would be one point nine miles, I would pay the fee and I wouldn't, wouldn't be here today.
Right.
But that's not what the policy states.
Right, here's, I'll, I'll give you a second example and then we can take questions. So we've had this conversation with a number of families at Mountain View and the calculated drop off point at Mountain View is the top of the hill, the top of the driveway. It's not to the school. So when they're calculating that mileage, yeah.
I was told it was consistently to the bus drop off spots. And that both drop off spots were used for the calculation.
That might be the case with Hilltown because they're trying to find a location. Yeah.
I'm actually talking about Mountain View here.
Yeah.
That Mountain View school uses two separate bus drop off spots because of that.
I wonder if since Mountain View has opened and it isn't just Whitebrook, because when it was Whitebrook, it was always the top of the driveway. It was my understanding that that had remained. So me, let's kind of get into this and see how this is going, because this is going to involve Mr. Tilby's family, this is also going to involve the superintendent's office, it's going to involve the transportation office, so there's a lot.
Oh, there's a lot going on here, yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So let's go ahead and hear from Dr. Bosch about how you understand the facts of the case.
So when Mountain View did open, we had a, a lot of parents concerned that because it was, Mountain View was further back, that.
Extremely long driveway.
Of course, yes, of course. A third of a mile.
So with the, the bus company, we actually rerouted all of the buses and took into consideration, there's actually two pinpoints that are used to determine mileage. One is in front of the middle school and one is in front of the elementary school. So there's two pins to the bus drop offs that we use for calculation. And, you know, it allowed actually like, I don't know, by using those two, fifteen more kids to be eligible for busing because of just like li, literally the distance because the school was moved back.
Can I ask how that was codified? Because I get, we've had a nice primer tonight of like the conversation of policy to procedure to practice.
Oh, it's best we stop.
Yeah.
Best we stop.
So I, I know that that wasn't codified in our policy.
Correct, it is not.
That was codified, which isn't unusual, but codified.
By, by, when we're determining bus routes, like, so Durham actually gives us the mileage.
Right.
So we, we, they have a software program that they use and it's as the crow flies, right? So it, or, sorry, it is like the, the drivable distance.
As the crow drives.
Drives.
As the crow drives.
It drives, not flies. Um, so they, we had them put, set the pins for in front, the, the location in front of the home where, or the bus, the location in front of the home to the schools is how they determine mileage.
So on the street in front of the house?
Okay. And so if there is a dispute, the first level of the dispute is, you know, they, we get the mileage from Durham and they say, okay, it is whatever. And sometimes there's a little bit of a discrepancy. So what we do with the second part of the appeal process would be, I, I work with, um, actually, E, the EPD.
They always do, the, yeah, the police always do these mileage checks for us.
So they do the verification of mileage for us. So I say, here's the address and here is, I'll either say MVS, middle school side, MVS elementary side, or Hilltown Charter. So they drive the distance and they clock it for us. And, you know, sometimes there is a little bit of a difference between what Durham's mileage has and, and because like say, uh, I don't know, there's a little bump out, it, it literally like it is to the hundredth of a mile.
Right.
We're looking at.
Can I ask a question, please?
Or did you finish your thought?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this, um, is this school committee business at this point or is this something that?
Actually, it's the policy.
So this appeal that we're hearing tonight is part of the policy, isn't it? So what she is walking you through are the levels of dispute and when it gets to a certain level, it comes before us.
So Mr. Tilby.
These are prior.
Mr. Tilby brought it to me and I made a determination and he had a second appeal. In the second appeal process, it's called a level two, it comes in front of the school committee.
Yeah, it's clear now. I, I was asking because I had the, the, um, impression that it was the inverse, that they would bring it to us and then we would pass it on to you.
Nope.
And then you would deal with that.
It's actually very clear in the policy. So, um, we have an internal, we review it, E, E, East Hampton Police is sort of the first level, then me, then school committee for the, the debate, the, you know, the discussion, the appeal process.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Okay. So at the time that the pins were established for Mountain View, when did we determine the point to calculate for Hilltown? And did that ever change historically?
And so it's been, so it's been from in front of the house to the school, to the school stop, wherever the bus stops for kids has been our practice for. And when, I don't, I don't remember when you first brought it to.
I brought it.
Would have been to Dr. Leclerc, just a few years ago.
Yeah, that would have been two years ago.
Two years ago. So, um, we did recheck, actually, like Mr. Tilby said, he went with, um, lieutenant, Detective Lieutenant Alexander.
Okay.
For.
Yes. Do we have information on where specifically that bus drop is? Like I just pulled up a Google map. So are we able to like, is that, is that?
Helluva.
Like where do the kids exit the bus?
There's a part of the crosswalk that, I don't know if it's going to be on your Google map if you're looking at it, but a crosswalk is on O'Neal Street.
Yep.
That's approximately where the bus drop off is.
So they don't go into where there's the little bus label on this?
Be, because they can't.
They can't.
Actually, the bus can't fit in there.
Put a school in an industrial park, so like turnarounds aren't there and stuff. So they're just going down O'Neal Street, dropping the kids off and then continuing on O'Neal Street.
So, but it's actually down.
Those aren't industrial.
Industrial Parkway.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's on, that's, sorry.
They turn off of O'Neal.
They turn off of O'Neal.
O'Neal, industrial park and the sidewalk.
And this is where this, can you go to?
Like a street new?
Yeah.
I have a low tech computer.
Okay.
So that's a little crosswalk right there.
So right there is where, so turning down O'Neal to Industrial Parkway, so the bus stops right here, the kids get off, they walk into the school.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so they are going down this direction and the difference in calculation is if they go into the parking lot?
So they would have to go, the bu, this is a one way.
Yeah.
Right? So it is, the bu, but the bus can't fit down here to back up here. So from literally when you turn to here, we are at like one point nine.
Got it.
Two or three.
Yeah.
But if you go down and around, you get to two.
And that's a one way.
Okay.
So you hit the two miles before you turn to the school park.
Thank you.
Before hitting the front door, basically.
Right.
Which is where parents utilize drop off.
Right.
Yeah, it's an extra bit.
Oh.
Isn't that, uh, that's where they drop the kids off is where they're measuring to go.
Right.
So the turnaround.
So it sounds like in recent years, we've added a layer of precision in the practice and procedure that hasn't been codified in the policy, but we've added this layer of precision to say, like, I was referencing how they used to calculate to the top of the hill at Mountain View, scooping bananas. So it does make more sense, but they've now calculated these three pins. I can see some frustration if you're reading the policy online and there isn't a mention I can see some frustration if you're reading the policy online, and there isn't a mention of that in the online policy. And then, from my perspective, sitting here, every twentieth of a mile costs the district $800,000 a year. So that's the level of concern. This isn't trying to like, good guy, back, this is just like, we have to be super, super careful when we're talking about exceptions for mileage or interpretations of mileage, because that impact, like, you know, the impact could be an enormous financial burden. We had to go back and get appropriation last year for $600,000 because of increased transportation. So I just want you to know, we're not, we're not unsympathetic. A lot of the constraints that you're going to hear tonight are probably due to finances.
Oh, and I can understand that. And I'm just, and this is because, I mean, I know this aspect of things, because most public wouldn't know this stuff. From my perspective, it's, wow, I've paid $1,500 over the past three years that I feel I probably shouldn't have paid. Are there additional costs beyond that to the city?
Right.
Now, I just don't know this part.
Right. So, our, our highest enrollment for transportation is going to start at the elementary level, right? Just more elementary kids are taking the bus. But we have the same fleet of buses that makes those three routes. So they start in the early morning for the high school, then that same, so that fleet of buses picks up the high school kids, jumps them at the high school, go gets the middle school kids, breaks them in, et cetera. There's, the, the Hilltown drop-offs are part of the fleet.
Right.
Yep. Um, so what it would involve, if we increase, the way we, we have it so tuned down that, um, when we were even looking at bringing some of our kids that were on van pool vans, some of our special education students, and putting them onto the general buses, it comes to our attention that we had four kids on this bus that requires an entirely new bus, which then ups the, I don't know, $85,000 a year per bus, I think we're at now. So this is the math that we're talking about. Then when you get to the complexity of fill the bus, which makes me insane, and it has since 2013, because I'm with you, you don't get the notice until, it used to be October, because we can't, we have to wait to calculate stuff. So I'm sympathetic to your frustration, but if they're saying, "Here's the pin, and this is the math", I don't know personally how I'm, how I'm going to override that. Which doesn't mean I'm not sympathetic.
The, the pin coming from Durham schools?
I think that, sounds to me, from what I'm hearing from the superintendent, that prior to her taking this position, likely under Marie Bernadette's, I don't believe that Dr. Leclerc did this, the decision was made that they have to identify a pin, a drop-off point, rather than just leaving the subjective language and interpretation for "to the school". So as I gave you that example, "to the school" five years ago was the top of, of like, mile-long trafficway. So they've added some precision to that language. Now I don't know what options I'm left with as an individual when I'm considering it. If that's clear.
Oh, it is, yeah. Well, I understand that it's a very complicated issue. I'm first requesting that this be addressed as a policy, needs to get reviewed immediately.
I think that's a great suggestion.
I mean, from a, from an onlooker perspective, it's a disaster waiting to happen, kind of thing.
And I think, I recall conversations happening when Mountain View was under construction. And I recall that conversation being halted because they wanted to see the end product. And then as that end product, right, as that school, that completion was happening, and students were moving into that, it's just one of these things, unfortunately, that got shoved to the back. You know, they had vacancies. I'm now saying it's our responsibility to pick that up and add that precision in there, because you're not the only person who has a misunderstanding and will feel really frustrated by, you know, it's, school hours are not really compatible with most working adult schedule. Like, we, I understand. I wish we could afford that every single child in the city.
We can definitely review the, I'll put it on the policy agenda.
At the bare minimum tonight, we will review it at the very next policy meeting. Does anyone else have, yeah, yeah.
Just one other thing that is on my mind as I'm thinking about this. I absolutely also sympathize. This is, it's like, we, we should just be able to bring kids to school. And by the "we", I mean the royal "we" of like, this, I don't know, where the money comes from, a tree or something. We should be able to get kids to school. That's not the reality of our situation. And the thing I worry about is making exceptions here or there and not applying those fairly. Right, because my, one of my, my like lens that I always come to these discussions with is equity. Right, and what level of like, access or understanding or whatever one family has versus another family of people who are in that 1.9 to 2.0 to 2.1 range. So that's where I, I mean, I completely agree, I think, making that more specific in the policy, and then having like, in the policy, like, where to get information on the pin drop.
I was going to say, I think for the policy, I'm going to suggest that we are more, because now we have our-
The buildings are complete, and they will not change, right.
So I, I think we should specify each building in the policy.
Yeah.
Including Hilltown.
And, and just so the public can understand, so Hilltown is a choice school, but because it's located within the city boundaries of East Hampton, it's kind of this standalone example, because if you, if your kids, for example, were going to Northampton, this wouldn't even be a conversation.
Correct, it would be a non-issue.
It's because the choice school is within the same district as their resident district, isn't it?
Right. That's the sole reason that's why.
And I know you get that, this is for like, those watching, who are like, "Wait a minute, why are we-" Just to be clear, that is, he's correct, that is a policy, because that school is in this district.
Yeah.
There are different considerations.
And with my particular case at Hilltown Charter, it's very much a one-off case, where if my house was 100 feet in either direction, it would be either a 100% outside of two miles or within two miles.
Right.
And it's this gray area here that's, and where practice and how it's been done in the past doesn't necessarily meet the word of the policy.
That's right. And I think sometimes too, like, what would happen, for example, we're going to have to look really closely. We're looking at really lean budget years coming up. One of the items on the menu is going to be lessening those restriction, or increasing those restrictions, changing the mileage, so that our responsibility to take X number of kids is lessened to the number of kids we can afford to transport. And it's, that is one of the very few things, because the next level of savings are teacher layoffs and reductions in force.
No one wants that.
Exactly, so it's, I just, I, you came tonight, you sat here through a god knows how long-
Actually, I rather enjoyed it.
I deeply appreciate that, you guys.
You know the phrase, "You don't know what you don't know"?
Yeah.
That was coming to light when I was picturing my sixth grader saying, "Oh my God, Owen's going to take charge of AI."
I'm thinking the same thing.
So I'm deeply, and I don't want to seem unsympathetic, and I don't want to give you the impression that this is rubber stamping anything.
Oh, I don't feel that way. It was, it was really twofold, was I wanted to really bring to the school committee's attention how this matters to be handled, because, you know, from my perspective, it's been three years, and, I mean, the previous superintendent, the comment to me, I quoted to you-
Unacceptable, this is her.
Oh, I think that was appalling, and, you know, when I'm either right along with, don't ask how many, how much hours I've involved in this.
Yeah.
And it was more of a frustration part, and the money isn't really the issue. I mean, I'm happy to pay it, and to tell you the truth, if I was giving the money back, I'd donate it back to the PTO or something, I don't care. But it's the concept of, when you know you're right on something, and you're told you're wrong, and you can't defend yourself, that's the, that's the problem here.
How are you feeling, like, with this process of talking to us tonight? If this were to ever happen, does this feel satisfactory to you in any way? Is there some other layer to this?
You can also think about that and let us know, you don't feel like-
Because we're going to be revisiting the policy.
I'd rather be watching all, I, I feel it was not really satisfactory, because the reason is, I've kind of proven that, hey, I have a just case here. Um, the concept of, oh, well, it's the budget problem, that's kind of a understandable aspect, like, I don't want to hurt the budget, I don't want to maybe impact the schools in any way, shape, or form, but it's kind of like, yeah, you're right, but budget doesn't count for this, so too bad, so sad.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm conceding, I agree with your argument. Here's the facts, as I understand them, and interject and clarify if, if we're coming to a disagreement, that we, like, the police officer, who, that is the person I have to listen to when I get a mileage, right? So he's saying it's like 1.96, some series of numbers after that, perhaps it runs up to 1.9. To this pin that we're being told was a practice that has been in place for at least a year. So that's what I'm being told, is that here's, there's a pin for every school, and from your home to this pin for Hilltown is 1.96.
Yes, no, the police officer, when I rode with him, wasn't actually sure where to meet, where the distance was coming from.
Wasn't aware of the pin.
He was not, he was not aware of the, where to take his location from.
I don't think that Detective Lieutenant, respectfully, he's the chief of detectives. I don't think he does those very often. I think it used to be, for a number of years, it was the SRO, then we did away with an SRO, and I think it went to patrol guys typically. It, it's, I'm surprised it was Mr. Alexander, Detective Lieutenant Alexander, honestly. I think he probably just hadn't done it before, I could check, but that's my guess, based on-
And it would be helpful.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful, because also, it'd be helpful, and the concept of this pin you speak of,
Yeah.
if that knowledge is in public.
I, I totally agree.
It will be.
I totally agree.
For that, we're going to put in the policy.
Yes.
So I don't know that, from my view, I don't think I'm seeing this as, I absolutely agree with you. I'm saying, I can see where you're coming from.
Yeah.
I was also a fierce advocate for my kids, and wanted to understand, and I appreciate and demand precision and accuracy and forthrightness, and I think that was what was motivating you.
Absolutely.
And I can appreciate and understand that. I'm also saying, the only mileage I can take is the one from the officer. The officer, when he was made aware finally of what that pin location is, it's coming out to this 1.96. And any exception that I were to condone could disrupt the finances for the next several years. So that's what I say in all of this, you know?
Totally acceptable, I have no issue with that, and I can, I can call the issue done. My biggest concern is going to be, though, is, I'm going to be honest with you all, you know, if I'm told my kid can't ride the bus again, I'm going to be right back here again next year.
It sounds like-
With the same issue.
If I can, it sounds like it's less about the $500 fee and more about the idea that your kids might not be able to ride the bus.
Oh, 100%, yes.
So, so that's-
So, in looking at the policy, so what your concern is, when the older sibling ages out, and then there's that gap, maybe we need to look at some sort of-
I'm wondering about this, yeah.
Hilltown goes to what grade?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
If you've been riding the bus all along.
If you've been-
We can't make promises outside of the-
Well, but like, so we allow, like, so-
Can we figure out how, how financially devastating would it be to go up to eighth grade instead of sixth grade?
Or fifth, or through fifth grade, I don't know. I don't know.
But then it, like, then it, you're talking about all of the kids at MVS too, so-
And the reason they can do, they're all on the same schedule, K through eight at Hilltown, correct?
So, that's why we-
They're not staggered, which is why that could happen.
They're not staggered.
Because it doesn't work this way at the public schools, right? You're not automatically, it's because it's the same.
Same time, it's all drop-offs and pick-up for the same.
Okay.
Right, so we actually made an exception for your old, Owen, sorry.
Oh, you're correct.
Okay, to ride, because he actually wasn't eligible-
Right.
-because of our policy, but there was, we're picking up a sibling, so we're not going to say no to other child, so we're like, oh.
There are little carve-outs we can make that don't really impact the bus. And I can give you one from my first year on the school committee. There is a family that had choice out, they couldn't buy a house in East Hampton, they bought a house in Southampton.
Yeah.
They lived on Line Street. We're all familiar with Line Street. So they, Southampton is on this side of the street, East Hampton on the other. The bus was stopping for this child who wanted to stay in East Hampton. They got a choice slot to stay in East Hampton High School. They're living on Line Street, the bus stops in front of their house.
Right.
And they were asking, "Can my kid just ride this half-full bus to the high school? We'll pay, we'll do anything." That's an exception we could make that has no impact on finance, right?
And we didn't make it.
Right.
Yeah.
My, where I'm getting stuck in your case, is the mileage is, we've now identified pins, and I'm, and I'll share your frustration, and we should have done that the minute that MVS opened for business. And the minute that Hilltown was established in East Hampton had come here from Williamsburg. Those things should have been determined immediately, and they weren't. We're not going to repeat that mistake again. Um, but the mileage is the, now that we've determined that, now we have to deliver that equitably, right? And that's where I'm getting stuck.
Well, I'm stuck, because in the spirit of what you've just said,
Yeah.
the bus is already going on Line Street, the bus is already going past my house. I live at 18 Park Street, which is kind of like diagonal across from Mitchell Street Bureau Hall. The bus is going right by there already.
It's going by a lot of kids that don't qualify.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the kind of, you just mentioned that.
It's a high, oh, I, I guess the level of, is a high school bus that was half-full.
And also, also, they didn't make that exception then either.
Right.
Like, so-
They didn't, no, I was the only one who supported it.
So, and, and, and there was an exception made for your oldest child to ride with a younger child. So, like, I, I just, I think that there, this is illustrating some places that, like, some concrete places for change, for sure.
Tighten it up and communicate more clearly.
No, absolutely, I'm totally up for that.
And relook at all of this, and this is something we should maybe put into a requirement for us to review. You know, once a year, once a year, enroll in in mileage, and making those adjustments to serve those manual.
This is like the number one, one of the, top three issue that we hear from families.
Oh, yeah.
That was the summer, like, it started in July, and it went through about October. So for me, I think clarification of policy is very helpful. And I put together like a little FAQ that we can-
Yeah.
Because again, it's policy and practice.
Yeah.
So, what, what is, what gets codified in policy, but what is the actual practice? So I think that's like, and our practices aren't clear. Our policy says one thing, but what is the actual practice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you've got to put in the policy a reference to, this will be in the handbook, it has to be approved every year, and it'll be like, to clean this up. If it's any consolation, my kids too, I lived 0.05 too close to Whitebrook and had to drive them every day. But I am self-employed, so I was able to do that, and many people aren't.
Okay.
And the expectation is a child of fifth grade is going to walk from my house in the plains-
Right.
-all the way down.
On all those-
And this is when they were calculating the mileage to the mouth of the driveway, which I did come and scream in a meeting.
I imagine, I, I, as would I.
Yeah, yeah.
Why can't the oldest child ride the bus?
Because the requirements differ depending on what grade you're in. So the higher grade level you are, the further you can be away, because the expectation is you could walk farther.
Yeah.
Correct, the expectation was that they would walk from my house down Route 10.
Right. I know, well, and, I was just looking at it.
We all know that, I just wanted to make sure you're-
No, exactly, no.
We all think it's whack.
We all think it's not good.
So I just wanted to ask a question to clarify, because I haven't read the policy on this transportation issue, but the mileage, when you're tracking how far it is from the house or whatnot to the school and the drop-off point, so obviously the drop-off point hasn't been totally clear, but is the starting point at the front of your house, at the start of your driveway, or where the bus picks you up?
It's, it's from like the front of your house.
Not where the bus picks you up, because the requirement is calculating the distance if you were to walk hypothetically from here to there. The problem with the drop-off pins is that was never, like, we have to pick all point, and it's, you know.
Yeah.
And actually determining the points for MVS and, um, it allowed, like, almost a dozen more kids. Clarifying just the distinction between MVS and, um, and the elementary school allowed like 12 more kids, just that driveway distance to, to get the bus.
That's, that's how many people fall into that zone, like-
We're a small town, geographic-wise.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, geographic-wise, that, you know, 100 feet's going to make a difference with a lot more kids, obviously, yes.
And not me, and like I said, we're already talking about we can't afford the buses we run. I'm not happy about it.
I just want this, I, I get it.
Yeah.
So that's really all I have for this, actually. Any questions at all, or?
Anyone else? Just appreciate you.
My, my pleasure, I just wanted to make it known, it was going on.
So, Mr. Tilly, I can ask you this, we can take a vote? Or, on whether or not we would supersede, whether or not we're going to support the superintendent's decision, or intercede and reverse that decision? We can take a vote?
Hold on, what, that's why I'm stumped on my hand.
Wait, so you gave us your presentation.
Yeah.
This is the part where you can ask us if you would like us to vote on that?
No, I did not wish for a vote, because I'll be honest, I don't want the money back.
But you are going to, you have gotten this onto the agenda for the next policy.
And that's, that is a win on my bill. That is a win I'm really seeking out right here.
I really appreciate that, and I think you've been really gracious.
I really appreciate the time you put into this, absolutely.
And you didn't, I mean, I should have even moved you, I didn't, you know, you sat there through that whole meeting, didn't-
I have kids too, this is something packs me, this is important.